Sleep mode is forever.
Uh huh.
Nothing I don't do anything to sink.
No.
It just.
These little color.
Put a little, a little solipatic in it.
Awfully quiet out there. Thanks for braving the fog to come out this morning. We'll wait just at the exact time so in case there's anybody else struggling to come in because of the visibility. I know coming from North County it was about as bad a fog as I've seen in some time. All right, close enough. Please rise and join me in our flag salute led by Supervisor Ashida. Remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please join me. Salute.
Our president is the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Welcome to our regularly scheduled January thirteenth meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Before I begin my, the first item on the agenda is the state of the county. And before I do that, I will take something somewhat out of context. The prophet Joel in the Old Testament stated at a future date, the following will happen. Your sons and daughters will prophesy, your old men will dream dreams, and your young men will see visions. I'm not sure if I'm on the old man's side of dreaming dreams or still young enough to be having visions. I won't ask Supervisor Vanapul what he thinks.
I think you're closer to the old.
But I have what I hope to be a vision for Tulare County in two thousand and fifteen. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for taking time to be here. As Chair for two thousand and fifteen, it's my privilege to share with my colleagues, county staff, and the county residents, a vision for Tulare County in the coming year, which I sincerely hope will become a vision shared by one and all. The finances and employee base of the county have never been stronger. As of August two thousand and fifteen, the county will have only a four million dollar outstanding long-term financial obligation, other than our defined benefit retirement plan, which at eighty-nine percent is the highest funded nineteen thirty-seven Act retirement system in the state. This is a far cry from where we have come in the last fifteen years, when five percent of our annual budget was dedicated to servicing the debts of the county. But more important to the health of our county than a strong financial position are our employees. We have, in my opinion, a team from management to line staff of unparalleled abilities and work ethic benefiting the residents of Tulare County and providing great services. Without our employees and their commitment to service, nothing could be or would be accomplished, and to them I say, thank you. Now as to short-term goals, most of which are already in progress, mention of some of the highlights is appropriate. My apologies to departments that go unmentioned. Even a cursory review of each department's plans would take up the entire morning. The following are representative of ongoing improvements which are occurring throughout the county. In the Sheriff's Department, newly-elected Sheriff Boudreau continues the transformation using civilians where appropriate while strategically increasing the numbers of sworn officers to benefit our residents and our property. Progress continues in the, on the planning, design, and beginning construction of a new jail facility in Porterville and the demolition and reconstruction of training and housing facilities at Sequoia Field. The county library system's new county librarian Darla Wegener will soon be on board and charged with continuing the work already underway to reopen the Farmersville branch. Beginning with the vision of one individual, the unincorporated community of London will soon have its own library branch. With no public school or county public facilities of any kind, the library represents a renewed county commitment to the residents of our disadvantaged communities, and to Robert Ischirdo, raised in London, goes a sincere thanks for remembering his heritage. Child Support Services Director Roger Dixon has recently come on board and is charged with working with our employees in that department to transform the work environment and improve service delivery. The District Attorney's Office and the newly-elected DA Tim Ward will be planning on moving its investigative unit into the courthouse, consolidating its operations, and improving communication within the department. Human, Health and Human Services is moving forward on several fronts, expanding its workforce to deal with expanded state and federal programs, and constructing and staffing a new mental health facility in Porterville. Resource Agency, the manage, I'm sorry, the Resource Management Agency, under the recent leadership change to Director Michael Spata and Assistant Director Michael Washam, will continue to expedite a community plans for Goshen, Pixley, Tipton, Early Mart, Strathmore, and Terabella Ducor, consistent with the county's general plan of development opportunities along major transportation corridors. Also, starting on January thirtieth, the Permit Center will be open on Friday mornings from nine to eleven AM, and a state-of-the-art GIS-based permit system will be operational during the coming year. After an exemplary career as the head of the UC Ag Extension Services in Tulare County, the number-one agricultural county in the nation, got to get that in there, Jim Solons will be retiring later this year. Jim's retirement continues the trend of baby boomers exiting the workforce and leaving the county with the challenge of hiring qualified replacements. Solid Waste is expected to reach franchise agreements with the county's solid waste haulers and complete negotiations with cities over the hauling of their waste stream to the county landfills. Purchasing is nearly ready to move in its new quarter, into new quarters located under the old Ag Commissioner's Office, escaping the old courthouse and its time-consuming security system. Planning will begin to move human resources into the former Ag Commissioner's Office, providing a highly visible location for prospective and current employees. By the way, when I see Ag Commissioner's Office, that shows you how old I am, because that used to be the Ag Commissioner's Office, and then it was, it was been the Office of the Department of Education for some time, but I still think of it as the old Ag building. Planning will also occur to relocate risk management into the offices currently occupied by human resources, putting them in closer proximity to county council, and allowing county council to also expand beyond its current quarters. Tulare Information and Communication Technology will be moving from the basement of the old courthouse in Government Plaza into the facilities vacated by the Office of Education, allowing for consolidation of staff under one roof and increasing efficiencies thereby. Planning and improvements will commence after the premises are vacated this fall. Capital Projects will complete office improvements to the offices of the Assessor, Auditor, and Public Defender. Now, shifting to the county as a whole, we need to take advantage of our improving financial position as reflected by increasing property value assessments and sales tax revenues to review county operations. To deal with the past difficult financial times, a number of positions were frozen to conserve labor costs. The time has come to strategically examine those positions and look at rebuilding our workforce to meet the public's expectation for services. We are also aware that many employees personally sacrificed putting in long hours to accomplish workloads increased by those unfilled positions. The time has come for management to evaluate those situations and devise plans to restore positions where they're needed. The county historically maintained a very modest reserve, even as our budget has grown significantly. We need to establish a more robust reserve in keeping with our larger overall budget and protect the county from future downturns in the economy. While it may take time to accomplish, it would be reasonable to set a goal of fifty million dollars as a prudent reserve based upon our current budget, which exceeds one billion dollars. We need to continue to encourage and support our employees to gain new skills and tools to accomplish their job responsibilities. Outside expertise to evaluate our current operational systems, together with harnessing the expertise of our own staff, should be ongoing and measured to achieve goals set by our own departments and this board. This is an area where we have made great strides as in the, as in the current transition of real property assessments to a new state-of-the-art computer system. But continuing improvement really has no ending point. Improving technology, streamlined processes, and improved skills are ongoing. We need to encourage our staff to take reasonable risks and strategize and explore opportunities to continually improve performance. On a longer-term horizon, we are well-positioned to look at future office and operations needs of the county. Removing staff from the courthouse so that the public and employees can avoid unnecessary security searches to other facilities can dramatically improve services with less aggravation. No one can seriously suggest that getting a marriage license requires a security screening. Or can they? The recent termination by the Office of Education of leases to two large buildings in the heart of our government complex and possible opportunities to purchase additional property at prices well below today's construction cost provides a catalyst to examine yesterday's plans and determine whether a new direction is warranted. At the end of the day, we must review all options from sale of obsolete or unneeded properties to the purchase or construction of facilities to meet the needs of a growing county and our staffing needs. I would be remiss if I did not mention the severe drought, which has affected the entire state, and the county's role going forward. While we pray and hope for above-average rain and snowfall for the remainder of the year, the impact to our groundwater will not be alleviated for some time. Tulare County will continue to seek funding opportunities and work with nonprofit and faith-based entities to help meet our, our residents' critical water supply needs. The county will continue to work with local partners and state and federal legislators to bridge funding gaps and remove obstacles to move projects forward. In closing, I truly look forward to working with my colleagues, CAO Gene Rousseau and his ABLO department, and the rest of our county department heads and staff in the coming year. Looking back to my three previous chairmanships, I believe the opportunities this year may be, may easily eclipse all the others. Our employee strength and financial soundness provides a sound base from which to spring into action. Tulare County stands ready to meet the needs of its residents and lead the state as an example of local government which is compassionate, effective, and efficient. Thanks again for your attendance, and have a great day. Thank you. And at this time, we will take up the Board of Supervisor matters, and we'll begin with Mr. Vanapul.
All right. Thank you very much. Nicely done. You know, I, I know you made a comment about the attendance here today. I don't know if it was because of the fog or because they knew you were giving the speech, but way to keep it short and sweet, unlike most attorneys. So, good job. I thought that was very well done, Stephen. Look forward to your year as chairman and what the year will bring for this county. I want to go over a couple of events that are taking place in District Two over the next week or so. In, tomorrow morning at seven-thirty, Rotary Park will be opening in Early Mart, and that's immediately adjacent to their Office of Education or their district office down there. Really want to thank the members of the Early Mart Rotary and all those businesses from both in and out of Tulare County that have contributed financially or via in-kind contributions to make that facility possible. It's going to be great for the community and is much needed, in addition to the county park that we're working on getting completed as well. On Thursday, I've been working with the VIEW Partnership, that's a coalition of different energy and utility companies, to help improve unincorporated communities. We put on an event in Wakina two years ago, and then in Alpa last year, and we were able to really help the residents get connected with energy programs and resources, and in celebration of their achievements, they will be having a luncheon to honor those various accomplishments this week, and I will be attending that. On Saturday, I was asked to participate in Encore Theatre's Murder Mystery fundraiser. Really have no idea why they asked me to participate, and they haven't followed up with me since, but I'm sure that they've got a plan for me.
Need a corpse.
What's that?
Need a corpse.
They need a corpse, well, that's pretty easy. So, I will be attending that and supporting that. It's a great organization that does a lot of good for the young people and folks interested in theater and in and around the Tulare area. And scheduling conflict with that event, I was committed to the Encore event before this event, but this is nonetheless very important, and that is the Tipton Community Awards Banquet. They do it on an annual basis, and they take time to recognize individuals and organizations in the community that go above and beyond to make Tipton a great place, and that will be taking place on Saturday evening. I encourage all those who are interested to attend and contribute to Tipton and continue making it a great place.
That's all I have.
Mr. Cox.
Well, before I comment on our, our new chair's speech, the last time I was involved in one of the whodunnits, I, actually, I ended up being the person whodunnit, and it was, it was a surprise to me, but I murdered someone. Mr. Chair, thank you for your comments. You gave us the opportunity to look at them yesterday, and I appreciated that, and I too look forward to a year continuing to move forward as, as quickly as we have over the last few years. It's been a, it's been a great pleasure working with such a good team that we have here in this building, our office, with our CAO Gene Rousseau and his staff. I, I think we've, he has built, and I think we have built, a excellent team to, to see that things get done. There are some artwork pieces up here that will be explained in a few minutes by Allison Pierce. One thing that I wanted to note, we are nearing completion of our strategic planning process for the Step Up Program. We worked on that for a couple hours yesterday afternoon with the Executive Committee, and I'm looking forward to rolling that out to the board members here within the next couple of weeks. That's all I have.
Mr. Heda.
Yesterday afternoon, we had a Water Commission meeting, and we had a presentation by Chris Kapheim, who is the Executive Director of the Alta Irrigation District, and he discussed a project in East Rosy, which Alta Irrigation District would be providing surface water, which would take a region off of pumping their own water, which has groundwater quality problems. That project would take East Rosy, Cutler, Yedem, Monson, Saltona, it's a large project. It's about a twenty-four million dollar project, which we'll probably, we'll probably be able to go forward with because of Proposition One. Now, this project has been on the, on the, on the drawing boards for Alta Irrigation District for fifteen years, so they have recently received a grant to set up how they're going to manage this new regional water system, and it's going to take involvement from all those communities that I mentioned, but they need to have a governance system, because Alta is not going to run that water treatment plant. So, we're making great progress on that project. It was probably the number-one project that was a result of the Tulare Lake Basin Study that we completed because of its regional, the regional capabilities of solving water quality issues in many of our disadvantaged communities in the north part of our county. So, we're very excited, and I believe that probably within four years, we're going to have that plant up and operational, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, congratulations on being appointed chairman, and I also agree with you. I think we've got a good board here, and a, and a good CAO, and the staff, and all our, the people that work here in the boardroom, as well as all of our employees and our management staff out there. Keep doing a great job. That's, that's what's, that's what runs this county, is each one of you departments, you're the face of this county, and I always tell you that. Tomorrow, I will be having a Workforce Investment Board meeting at noon. We continue to work on Success Dam. We continue to try to get the written document from the SOG Committee that the restrictions are definitely off of Success Dam, although we've been told they are off. They've gone for a RFP on a marina, and we do have one per, one person that has applied for that, so that's a good indicator that the restrictions are off, because nobody in their right mind would come in with a marina if it was going to hold us at about twenty-nine thousand second, twenty-nine thousand acre feet. Let's just hope we get past that this year. Let's hope that Mother Nature cooperates with us and, and we do get some rain and snow in the mountains. This weekend, we've got the Sierra Winter Classic, which is a big steer and heifer show that comes to the Porterville Fairgrounds every year. My wife works on that, and I've been, I try to help out as much as I can, but that's a big show. It, it starts on Friday night and runs through Sunday, so that's going to be a big, big show in Porterville. And then Thursday, I have the Porterville Area Agribusiness Luncheon on Thursday at noon, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I wanted to say thank you for all again for being here, but a couple of the people I wanted to point out. First, former supervisor and Assemblyman Bill Mays, thank you for being here, Bill, today. And then also Dr. Kuldip Tusu is newly elected to the Dinuba City Council, braved northern fog to come down and see us here this morning, so Dr. Tusu, thank you for being here today. Tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, Cuieta Delta will be having a grand opening for the health clinic that they have built in Dinuba. I know, speaking with different physicians, they're excited about this because of bringing in specialists into the community. Dr. Tusu's facility also does that, but it's a way, since we don't have a hospital any longer in Dinuba, the ability of, of people to have, people beyond their general practitioners but specialties come into the community to provide services is of great importance and avoids a lot of travel for the people in our community, so I'll be attending that. And that concludes my comments during public, I mean Supervisor's Matters. At this time, we will take up the public comment period. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Supervisors this morning on matters that are within our jurisdiction but not on today's agenda are invited to come forward at this time. Anybody wish to speak? Allison wishes to speak.
Good morning, Supervisors. I just wanted to make a quick announcement. The artwork you see before, oh, actually, you can't see it, but the audience has the privilege of seeing, is going to be displayed for the Fourth Annual Urban Art Tour. That'll be taking place throughout the county at various libraries throughout the county, listing Visalia, Dinuba, Woodlake, Exeter, Lindsay, Strathmore, Porterville, Early Mart, Pixley, Tulare, and ending at Tulare County Government Plaza. We thank our partners at both the like, the county libraries, the city libraries in Porterville and Visalia, and then of course Government Plaza for hosting it. The artwork was created this past fall at the Taste the Arts Event, and it features Tulare County Office of Education's Choices Program, so the artists were inspired by the program, and the art was created by that, the artist. So, anyway, they, they will be kicking off tomorrow, Wednesday, at five-thirty at the Visalia Library, their Urban Art Tour. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak this morning?
Good morning.
Give us your name and address, please.
Megan Flynn, County of Tulare, Information and Communications Technology. I'm just making the announcement that our CVTEC event is this Thursday at the Visalia Convention Center. We host this event every year. This is the fourth year. It is open to the public, but it is basically focused on government and education technologies. We have lots of sessions. They're filling up quickly. The website for more information is the CVTEC, and CVTEC is C-V-T-E-C dot com, so that's all.
Very good. Thank you. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Brian Newton, Laurel Avenue in Visalia. Hadn't planned on speaking, but I just thought, take a minute as a citizen to recognize Mr. Cox's service as a previous chairman. My experience with him has been that he's very honest, he's very direct, very thorough, and I certainly appreciate his, his time. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else wishing to speak this morning? All right, very good. We will close the public comment period, bring it back to the Board for our consent calendar, items five through eleven. Are there any items of which members of the Board wish to handle separately? Anyone in the audience wish to address any matters on our consent calendar this morning? Seeing no one, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Innis, second by Cox. Any further comments? Not cast your votes, please, and the votes are unanimous. We're a little early yet for our public hearing, so we'll take up untimed items. Item twelve is a request from Information and Communications Technology to approve an agreement with Verent for the purchase and implementation of the Verent Call Center System. Morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board, and I am Bill Harrison. I'm the Assistant Director for Information and Communications Technology. This item is to replace some very old equipment at the Call Center for Health and Human Services Agency, which we installed back in two thousand and six. The equipment is no longer supported by a manufacturer. The manufacturer actually has gone out of business. So, it is, at this time, we believe, critical to replace that equipment. There is a correction that I need on this agenda item. It originally was going to be brought forward to you on an earlier date. It will be effective from the date of your action as a board, not January fifth, so it is not a retroactive contract.
I'm chuckling a little bit because when you say it's very old and it's two thousand and six, I mean, you know, it, it just shows you how relative and in information technology terms, old is very different from an antiques dealer, right?
Yes. In our industry, these are antiques.
Are there any questions or comments?
One quick.
Have one quick question. Looking through the agreement, there's a line item for travel, forty-one thousand dollars for travel. It seems ten percent on a contract like this for travel, to me, seemed extensive. Are they coming from out of the country or something? And if they're coming from out of the country, why are we buying something from out of the country?
Well, they're not coming from out of the country, but they are coming a long distance, and they will be here for an extended period of time to do the installs, and so that is covering their costs.
Forty-one thousand dollars, though. And, and someone analyzed that, and that's reasonable?
Yes, we, we did the analysis.
Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Intervent motion?
Mr. Chair, going back to two thousand and six, UCLA graduation, go Bruins. I will move for approval of this item.
I'll second that.
Motion by Vanapul, second by Innis. Please cast your votes, and the vote is unanimous. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
We have just a few more minutes. Do we want to go into closed session and then come back?
Certainly could. Mr. Chairman, you have items through...
You know what? I think instead of that, there may be some folks who want to just leave this. We'll, we'll just, we'll just take a, a brief timeout, and we'll come back at, at the appointed time in three minutes, and we'll, and we'll take up, and then we can say goodbye to some people that may have... Call the meeting back to order at this time, and we'll be taking up item four, which is a public hearing. I'm not going to read this entire page of information, but essentially it has to do with the Porterville City General Plan. Mr. Wash, Mr. Washam.
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors, CAO and County Counsel, Mike Washam, Tulare County RMA. Today, we were bringing... Today, we were bringing forward the Porterville Area Community Plan Update in response to our settlement agreement with the city. Based on a recent request from the city and council, there's been a number of revisions that are proposed for the resolution, as well as the community plan itself, that needs to be made. Accordingly, RMA respectfully recommends that this morning, you receive the staff's presentation, open the public hearing to take any testimony, and then we request that the public hearing be continued to February 24th at 9:30 to allow time to receive, review, and make the requested revisions. With that, I'll hand this over, the presentation over to one of our chief planners, Aaron Bach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Bach.
Chairman Worley, Board, C A O, Counsel. I am Aaron Bach, Chief Planner, Tulare County RMA. And what we do have before you today is the update to the Porterville Area Community Plan. The proposed General Plan Amendment, GPA 14-008, is intended to update the existing Porterville Area Community Plan adopted by the Board in 1990. On August 26, 2014, the Board of Supervisors approved the General Plan Initiation, and on December 10, 2014, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the Porterville Area Community Plan Update. This does include the findings of consistency and a statement of overriding consideration in addition to the community plan update. And in addition, there is development standards that are approved separately from the community plan and the finding of consistencies, with exceptions noted. By way of background, the revisions to the city development standards, and we do want to make this point very clearly, and master plans will be considered by the county under separate action in the future, and they are on the, on the precipice of updating their master water and wastewater plans as we speak. So, any revisions in the future will be under a separate action. East Porterville Improvement Standards, as for clarification, minor projects, including parcel maps, will still be required to conform with the setbacks associated with these standards, but will not be required to apply the development standards of the community. So, any county projects under parcel maps can still proceed under our existing infrastructure standards. Clarification that the settlement agreement between the county and city of Porterville details how the county will implement these policies, similar to other MOUs with other cities throughout the county, within the CAC UDB and the CAC UAB within Porterville. By way of general plan consistency, we did go through the extra effort to verify in detail the consistency throughout this document, that it is consistent with the planning framework, land use, transportation, circulation, open space, and foothill growth management plan. There were obvious changes to our land use and a land use diagram for East Porterville and some of the other county donuts within Porterville, but there is no substantial change to the urban boundaries around East Porterville, or I should say, no changes. Changes to transportation, circulation, of course, were included in this document to update those areas to be consistent with the city's general plan. The land use diagram before you today represents the last few months of working with the city to incorporate their changes to their general plan and as their city boundary was approved by LAFCO in October. So, that's reflective of this land use plan before you. And again, as I stated, the circulation and transportation plan has been updated to reflect the city of Porterville's circulation and transportation plan. So, the proposed actions that this board will be approving are quite extensive. I'll go through them as quickly as I can. The planning framework element revises the county adopted city urban development boundary and county adopted city urban area boundary for Porterville. This plan also maintains without revision an urban development boundary for East Porterville area. The county's CAC UDB is co-ternamentous with the sphere of influence, as I suggested before, adopted by the Tulare County LAFCO on October 1st, 2014. And in addition, the environmental resource management element is amended to include the urban expansion area, and that's the area that's included to the east of the city as designated in the open space map. The Porterville Area Community Plan incorporates the city's general plan, land use designations, and development policies. Specifically, this plan supersedes the following land use and circulation, circulation plans. So, you can see there's quite a long list of plans that have been updated and are superseded by the area plan. So, this does clean up a lot of those, those old plans. This plan also supersedes GPA 82-04, the East Porterville Land Use and Circulation Plan. So, in addition to the area plan, the East Porterville Land Use and Circulation Plan also includes land use and circulation elements in plans for the East Porterville area. And as you can see, there's a list of plans that have been adopted over the last few decades that are cleaned up and approved as part of this, this plan. This plan amends the foothill growth management plan to remove the portion of the area within the county adopted city UAB, which currently falls within the foothill growth management plan. And in addition, as I stated before, and we can't make this point clearly enough, the Tulare Board of Supervisors will independently review and exercise this discretion when considering the adoption of Porterville Development Standards and city master plans. Revisions to the city development standards and master plans will be considered by the county under separate action in the future. For SEQA, what we did was a finding of consistency. According to Section 15168(c)(2), a program E I R, which is what the city of Porterville's General Plan E I R is, a program E I R, when addressing the effects of subsequent activity, this being a subsequent activity of this area plan, so long as the activity is within the scope of the project covered by the program E I R. So, the county did make the findings, as supported by the analysis presented in this document. The plan would not result in newer, substantially more severe, significant environmental effects than what was analyzed in the city of Porterville's 2030 General Plan E I R. So, we are consistent. And in addition, it has been requested, and we agree, that a statement of overriding consideration, consistent with the Porterville General Plan E I R, be reviewed, considered, and approved by this board. So, as Mike Wash suggested, what we'd like today, and RMA respectfully requests, is that we open the public hearing to take any public testimony, and secondly, that we request that the public hearing be continued to February 24th, 2015, at 9:30 to allow time to receive, review, and make the requested revisions.
Aaron, just, just clarification, the, the changes that are, that are being requested are being revisions. Nothing material is actually changing in the, the plan itself. These are, these are more cleanup type of language. Is that what we're dealing with?
Yes, we have online right now the most up-to-date version. Some of the suggested changes, we're making sure those date two versions ago for the, for the most part. So, we're just making sure we've caught all those. And yes, they're, they're not substantial or significant.
Questions, comments, Mr. Innis?
I just got one question. How many revisions?
As, I can't say for certain. There has been suggested that there are upwards of 400 revisions, but again, that was based on two documents. That was the document that was going to go to the Planning Commission for the recommendation. So, those changes, we're just verifying were made, and what's online now, you know, I could say there shouldn't be any more than 100 or so. A lot of them formatting and grammar, but we're all paying attention to it now, so I think, I think there's only a few changes left to make. And that, that's speaking from the actual land use, I mean, the community area plan itself. The findings will, will be also verified and perfected through this process. So, those, those should be minor as well.
Any other questions, Congressman Cox?
Well, I guess a technical question. Why, why do we leave that East Porterville UDB intact inside of this, since it's being wrapped around by the Porterville UDB? Why do we leave that, that East Porterville UDB there? Or is that line going to be limited? Because it's on the plan now, and it actually said that that was going to stay. Why does that need to stay?
Well, I don't think there's any intent to annex, but the city of, the city of Porterville's here today, and they can also help ask, answer that question, but I don't think there's any intent to.
So, the answer would be until it was annexed, that line stays? Is that the answer?
And Dave Bryant here as well.
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board, C A O, County Counsel, Dave Bryant, Tulare County RMA. The East Porterville Urban Development Boundary is recommended to remain intact to provide some flexibility in regards to the purposes of the, of the settlement agreement, as well as consideration of the differences between the, as Aaron mentioned earlier, providing some flexibility between urban versus non-urban standards. That was a provision that was provided for as part of the settlement agreement, and so in recognition to that flexibility pertaining to that specific area, it's recommended that the UDB remain intact to provide that flexibility, consistent with the purposes of the settlement agreement.
Okay. Well, I don't understand, but I guess I have until February 24th to be brought up to speed.
Supervisor Cox.
I'll be honest, I don't, I don't understand. I mean, you know.
Supervisor Cox, like, like I said earlier, I, I don't think there's any intent ran, right now, to annex that area, but as Dave just stated, based on the settlement agreement and the way things are right now, I think there is still ownership out there who, who may want to stay in, in the county. So, until that's worked out over time, I, I don't think that would be annexed, but our settlement agreement does make provisions for that area.
If I can respond, I mean, if that's the holdup, you know, having been on the city council of Visalia where we were annexing lots of islands, there were a few people who, you know, well, I don't need to be in the city, I mean, you know, I'm happy where I'm at, and they fought those annexations all the way until the sewer line came in front of their house, and they hooked up to it, until the water line came down in front of their street and they hooked up to it. They were, you know, they hated the city until those, those city services started driving through their neighborhood. So, I mean, I guess I will take the next month to fully understand why that line is going to stay there, maybe how long it's going to stay there. It just seemed to have a, our own set of development standards inside of another set of development standards, but we're agreeing to adopt their development standards, doesn't make sense to me.
If I, if I could respond, I think this community plan starts that discussion. I think that is, we, we are just beginning that, and the fact that we do adopt their development standards means that, you know, it's not tomorrow that all these parcel maps have to start hooking up to their sewer and water, which would be very, very costly and feasible, but it sets the foundation for any super, new subdivisions moving forward in that area to start to have to look at hooking up to the city services. And so, that, this community plan spells that out fairly well, and also the settlement agreement does.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to address the board on this matter as well? We will continue the public hearing to the, a later date, so that folks will also have an opportunity at that time to participate. Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisors.
Please give us your name and address.
My name is Jenny Byers. I'm with the city of Porterville, 291 North Main, Porterville. I'm currently working in the capacity of the Community Development Director, and so I've been working with staff extensively. Hector's done a great job with the environmental. I've enjoyed working with Aaron and Dave both. Some of the comments that we're talking about, that staff wanted to see revised, back when we were going to the Planning Commission, we had worked through our substantial issues, and then I had done in Microsoft Word, an evaluation, and there were some changes that I wanted, but I also sent an email, and so my email was a little bit vague, that I also wanted them to look in the Word document. So, a lot of this is, I'm going to take the blame on that. So, I do appreciate that you guys are willing to look at it now. Some of my comments included, the word "plan" is used a lot in this 200-page document, and so it's sometimes confusing whether you're talking about the city's general plan, the county's general plan, or the area community plan, and so some of the comments are that. Some of them are, I was previously the secretary for the city, and so I, I do have a formatting thing, and so, some of my requests are just formatting, and also the footers, that type of thing. One of the things I also appreciate is the master plan, doing this under a separate resolution. The city hasn't updated their master plans in a long time. We're waiting to update our urban development boundary, and so we're going to be moving forward, updating those master plans over the next year and a half, and so we'll be back before the board to implement those master plans that are discussed. And so, I think that's why we made the decision to do it by resolution, and so staff appreciates that as well. I'm available if you have any questions.
Are there any questions, Ms. Byers?
Oh, thank you.
Can I?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment. The changes that staff is, is requesting are what lawyers call wordsmithing, basically, as described by Ms. Byers. The substance of the agreement has not, is not changing.
No, we worked through that.
So, certainly, I, I understand Supervisor Cox's question, and will endeavor to make sure that that's, I'm sure staff will make sure that that's addressed before the 26th, but it's not, I would not call any of these changes substantive changes.
No, that was my question to, to staff earlier for that reason. Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
If not, anybody else wishing to address this during the public comment period? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment period, and I say, I'm sorry, we'll remain open until the next meeting date, which I would, at this time, entertain a motion to continue this matter to February 24th.
I'll make that motion.
Bush by Mr. Innis. Second by Mr. Cox. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous, so we will see you all back here on the 24th of February. That concludes our open session this morning. We have matters in closed session, Counsel?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you do. You have items A through G on your board's closed session agenda. There may be an announcement.
Thank you.